President Clark.
Okay, thank you David. Ms. Strang.
Ms. Strang is here.
Thank you. Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes from the May 23, 2022 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Scraby Tennis for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diarpino. Any corrections or comments on the minutes? I have none. Anybody? Okay, seeing no comments or changes to the minutes, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the May 23, 2022 meeting minutes are approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for our record. I don't believe we have anybody here for privilege of the floor, so I'll ask if we have anybody virtually that's logged in to speak at privilege of the floor. Okay, I just want to check what Laura, see if she had any communications today. Or Mr. Henry, do you know if we've had any emails or letters sent in for today?
I have not received any.
Okay.
I didn't receive any as of five.
Okay.
I'll double check now, but you guys can continue.
Okay, we'll take a look. Okay, so it looks like we don't have any requests for privilege of the floor and we have no unfinished business. So move to new business. Under new business tonight, we have two resolutions. First resolution being Resolution 2022-12, a resolution for site plan approval for renovations and new signage at Starbucks at 2303 Knot Street East. Just want to mention that the resolution that was posted online had a slight modification. We had to include the waiver for signage that was missing in the earlier version, but I'll read that. So for this resolution, we have resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the proposed waiver for signage would have a minimum negative effect on aesthetics and is compatible with the existing facades, does not, and does hereby grant said waiver as outlined above and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code in previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One condition, number one, prior to issuance of a building permit, the Niskiun Tree Council is to review and approve a proposed landscaping plan which shall include the removal of dead trees and replanting of dead or missing trees in the area near the Starbucks site. Mr. Khan, do I have a motion on the resolution?
I move to be adopt the resolution, Chairman Walsh.
Moved for approval by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Scraby Tennis. And we'll have some discussion. Do we have the applicant online?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
Dan Brennan.
I assume you had a chance to take a look at the revised resolution, but basically granting the waiver for the sign that has 100% logo on it, where our code only allows 30% logo, so there's a 70% waiver and that's included in the resolution.
Yes, sir, we're going to work with the Tree Council to satisfy the needs.
Okay. Any discussion from the board or comments or questions toward the applicant around the resolution? No? Okay, hearing no comments or questions, Mr. Henry, do please call the roll.
Mr. LaPlante.
Aye.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution carries and the improvements at Starbucks are approved. Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Do you have any questions at all?
Nope, I'll be in touch with the Tree Council to satisfy the needs and we'll move forward with that building permit. I'd like to thank you all for your help and Clark for your assistance as well.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it and good luck with everything. Look forward to the modifications and improvements. All right. All right, so we have another resolution tonight and that's Resolution Number Two, Resolution 2022-13. It's a resolution for site plan approval for dividing the existing commercial space into two spaces of 10,330 square feet and 2140 square feet with a 127 square feet landlord utility room with one of the new occupants being a Five Below retail store at 424 Balltown Road. I'm going to recuse myself from this resolution and turn the meeting over to Dave Diarpino.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have an applicant online representing?
Yes, Rick Flaters is present.
Okay, thank you. Just to recap, the proposal that's here before us is taking an existing space, putting up a demising wall. Also, there was some information in there on the hours of operation and number of employees per shift, so.
Right, for the Five Below, yes.
Okay, good. Any other items you'd like to add?
Yes, sir. I didn't have it in the proposal description, but we are replacing the storefront, but with no signage by others.
Right, and then that will become a separate application at some point in the future, correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right.
Mr. Chairman, we still don't know who the other leasehold is, who the other tenant is?
That's correct. That's still just a future tenant.
Any other discussion?
But it will be, it is retail, mercantile, no change of use.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion items, we will call for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Khan.
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Scraby Tennis. And we will read the resolution. So there are no conditions. Now therefore, be hereby further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code in previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves this site plan. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. LaPlante.
Aye.
Mr. Scraby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino.
Aye.
I think we need to have Ms. Gold take, Ms. Gold says acting alternate tonight so she can vote.
Okay, Ms. Gold. Ms. Gold.
Hold on one second, Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion was unanimously approved, thank you. And we wish you the best of luck, Mr. Flather, on your project.
That's great. Thank you all for all your help. Take care.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you everybody and thank you, Mr. Diarpino. All right, so we'll move to the next party agenda, which is discussion items. First up being 2207, 2209 Knot Street, that's the broken-in site plan application for temporary outdoor seating and parking space changes. And Mr. Diarpino is the project lead and I believe we have Mr. Nicky online tonight. Yes, I can see him. Yep. Okay, I don't know if you want to kick it off, Dave?
Sure. So since our last meeting, emergency approval was granted to have barriers placed on the west parking lot over to the edge of the building of Langs. That has since been installed and it is adjacent to the current construction project that's going on at the Knot Street improvements. Since then, it looks like the cars have been queuing up perpendicular to that and there's been people, you know, behind the barriers. There's a series of benches that are put up on the one side and enough space for pedestrians to easily walk around and walk through, not only adjacent to the buildings, but also into the temporary construction sidewalk area that's around the corner. I think those are the latest updates. I know that Mr. Nicky is currently working on a secondary plan to look at possibilities of what we have for permanent outdoor seating. And if you want to add anything to that, Mr. Nicky?
That's all correct. We're working on that plan. I was hoping as part of the discussion item tonight, we could take a look at how the parking configuration is currently anticipated as it relates to the county project and then in relation to, I believe this would be town area. We've learned quite a bit since erecting this temporary barricade, including what we think would be a much safer parking configuration, but it's certainly beyond my scope of understanding a little bit. I don't know if Laura Robertson has the ability to share any of the drawings that we had sent over. They would help describe better. I can't share my screen here.
You can, but I can share my screen too. Do you want me to share that?
Yeah, that would be great. I'm just looking for the close-up drawing that I sent in the initial package that MJ Engineering.
Yeah, the one you sent, and you sent it tonight too.
Well, yeah, that's a different one, but this one is closer up so you can actually see the dimensions. What we've sort of found out now is that the parking spaces, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Henry, need to be 18 feet long by nine feet wide, I believe. Is that correct? Yep. And the space that's been allocated for parking spaces based on this configuration is only 22 feet from the actual facade of the building, which would leave at best four feet for people to walk between the building and cars should we continue to go down the path of configuring parking as is planned. I did send an alternate drawing from MJ Engineering over to Laura earlier tonight, so you could share either of those. But I was hoping we could have a discussion as to, because it'll obviously dictate what we propose in terms of how this planning board feels the parking configuration should be laid out. Okay, so this is the one that I sent earlier this evening. I'm sorry that most of you haven't had a chance to take a look at this. And in fact, it may be easier. Laura, do you happen to have the other one that was in the original packet?
I do not have access to my computer right now. We had a virus and my computer's not able to connect. I thought I could, but I can't. This is the only one I have.
No, that's fine. So I'll try and explain as best as possible and Mr. Diarpino may be able to jump in because he's seen it as well. But where you see this new construction here to the right, yeah, perfect, right there. Where you see this new construction here to the right and what looks like a brick area in the existing drawing as they're planning to pave it and stripe, and now there are four parking spaces that park towards the sidewalk, if you will, so they're going left to right as opposed to up and down here. This is a drawing that we provided that would make parking certainly safer and also accommodate for an outdoor seating area. As you'll note in this drawing here, it says 24 feet from the side of the building to where the sidewalk area would be. In the existing drawing where parking spaces are planned to be, there's only 22 feet for those parking spaces. And I know this is a challenge without me being able to share these drawings with you. But really just the question of, do we want people parking in, within four feet of the building and in multiple directions? Or do we want to simplify parking so that everyone is parked in the same direction and still able to navigate safely?
So I can speak to that a little bit when the town was working on the emergency approval, both the police chief and the highway superintendent were out there. And they were definitely not thrilled about the idea of having parking spaces essentially like if the car pulled right in, the headlights would be facing directly out to Knot Street. So they were not thrilled about those parking spots. The county included them though to maximize the parking in the area because when the county was doing public input to their project, a big issue was don't take away any of the parking, so the county added in those four spots. I think if there's a way to kind of gain spots elsewhere, the highway department did not like the idea of those four spots that essentially are being removed with this plan. But I think it's important to try and find a place, like which we talked about before and maybe it can be like a joint project, but figuring out a way to put more spaces over on like the Crescent roadside or something.
Yeah, I think if you look at, looking at the notes here, Mr. Henry can tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, the numbers with the post Connected E County project, I think we lost a dozen spaces as a result of the reconfiguration. And then currently with one of the proposals, I'm not sure which one, it's not clear, but we're going to probably lose at least another three spaces where we're at today, maybe not with this proposal, with the other one. So down about 15 spaces over where we were, you know, pre-broken-in, pre-county upgrades, okay? So, you know, we need to, one of the things we got, that's one of the things we got to work on, right? We got to work on maximizing the parking spaces, minimizing the impact on the other businesses and also on the residents on Crescent Avenue and what's it, Side Street there, whatever, it's not, Clifton Park. So really what we need, Mr. Nicky, is the applicant to make the proposals of how we can get there. The planning board doesn't design the parking. But we'll give feedback, but we need you to submit and do the numbers on where we're going to end up on parking. We need to have that along with the information. I believe Laura sent you an email maybe a week or two ago that stated all the information that we need to go forward to modify the special use permit, which would also include, you know, what you plan on doing there, hours of operation, type of function, you know, whether it's just outdoor seating or whether it's outdoor dining, you know, all the information that we need in order to hold a public hearing. So we got a little bit of work to do.
That's, no, that's correct. And I did get it on the third from Laura. The, we can't really put together a proposal though until we have this discussion relative to the parking. Because if the parking, I don't know, can you see where I've shared my screen here?
Is that you?
Yeah, so those four parking spots that are sort of tucked into the red are the ones you're talking about.
I understand.
Correct. So if these four parking spaces are to stay as they are, then these parking spaces here are going to be within four feet of the building, which would not allow us to do anything relative to outdoor seating area of any way, shape or form, literally from the brick on the front of the building to the front of the parking space. And again, that's hoping that people stop at the front of the parking space is only four feet off the building. Now, I don't know for starters if we can even do anything with these four parking spaces. If we can, then we can proceed with a proposal, but if we can't, then there's really no proposal to be placed forward. And that's what I'm trying to learn from this group here is how do we go about, I mean, if I, are you suggesting that I make a proposal?
Well, I guess that's a good question you had there, Ms. Nicky. Let's start with that. Who owns those four parking spaces?
So I talked to the county about it because they reached out and said, hey, where you put your temporary barriers is going to end up blocking some of the proposed parking. They're okay with seeing how things work out there and reconfiguring. They just want to be part of the conversation. So I think that if we can reconfigure and everybody's okay, the county's okay with that reconfiguring, but they did note that already we're interfering with those parking spaces with the emergency barriers out there. But obviously they're under like a ton of construction right now, so.
Is the plan for the county to complete construction of those four spaces or take a pause based on a planning board or applicant input?
So I think they'll be a good partner. The reason that they put those parking spaces there was because they were trying to maximize the parking. So if we can come up with a configuration that, you know, has public input and keeps as much parking as possible, I think they will work with us. We just got to keep them in the loop. But yeah, I think it's okay to have those reconfigured if we can find a different way.
Right, but the timetable is, go ahead, Ms. Nicky.
If I can share to that, and I have spoken with the foreman and their intention is to stripe this within the next two weeks.
Yeah, well, I mean.
That's okay, so they're under contract to complete it.
Yeah.
So we'll let them complete. If we got to block them off temporarily, well, we'll do what we got to do. I think, so it sounds like they're going to be completed and then it's up to us what we do with them in the future once they're done. So that's why we need to.
So, sure, and I'll submit that then, so it'll be available for the next meeting. I would just say to that end, part of our emergency agreement was to obviously erect temporary barrier, but also to stripe the parking lot, which we have not yet done because it would essentially, with their striping and our striping, they would cross over one another. So I'm sort of an impasse here as to what you'd like me to do.
So the previous drawing that was up, Laura, what's our criticism against that one?
Well, I don't know what the count of the parking is. And I think that it's good to, you know, make sure that it's working, but I think that the hardest part about that one is that the cars are going to essentially be backing out into Clifton Park when they back out of those parking spots, which is what they were doing on Knot Street, which is what the county fixed.
And I can provide that measurement and I'm happy to provide that measurement in the next, the next set of proposal that's sent over here. To answer, I think, I'm not sure whose question it was, it was Mr. Khan's. We would lose two parking spaces total by taking these four and turning them 90 degrees to then place two spaces in that area. But in terms of measurement, cars wouldn't be backing up directly onto Clifton Park Road. There'd still be ample area for them to back up and then turn as opposed to Knot Street that existed, you know, up until two months ago, where you were a mere two feet from the street line. Which of course also raises the question of how to clearly identify where the street line is because as it sits now, it's challenging to identify.
Yeah, I mean, even putting a fog line down to delineate the boundaries of the street could be good. So just a thought, like we can, so I mean, we can reach out to the, like Tommy, like I don't, like you, Clark, and I can schedule a call with the county. I imagine we can get them to not stripe the lines, but if they don't stripe the lines, it'll be our cost to stripe the line. So, I mean, and I'm not sure that, you know, we don't have a line striper, so like if you want to wait on the lines, it might then be up to you to finally to stripe the lines over there.
Well, can we?
I have a striper and paint, so ready to go. I just, I don't want to put paint on the street that's going to.
Interfere with theirs. Yeah, I feel like we could have a.
It's going to make six foot, it's going to make six foot deep parking spaces.
Let me, one way to handle it, just let the county complete, do their striping. If we got to close it off, you know, for the temporary area that you have now, so we just close it off, at least it's done. As far as your striping goes, we can hold off on that until the county's out of the way and see what the heck we got, or isn't that a good way to address it?
So we could do that. The only kind of caveat to that is that the reason that we were asking Mr. Nicky to stripe now is because when there isn't striping down, the cars tend to space themselves farther apart. So we will get more cars parking more normally if he stripes.
But if the barricades close off the four parking spaces, can't we just, again, let the county complete it, move it temporarily, let them stripe it, put the barricades back, have Mr. Nicky do the temporary striping as we work through the process here of, you know, understanding the parking and how we can create, maximize the parking and all that stuff?
Yeah, we could. I mean, I don't mind reaching out though if striping's not super expensive and it's going to mess up.
I mean, I'm okay with it if they want to wait.
If we eliminate those four spots that were just up that Mr. Nicky showed was by the county, right?
They're putting them in as a.
If we eliminate those four spots, what goes in there instead?
Well, he's got like two there and then some brick, right?
Right, so.
So it would be, where you see four spots essentially going north, south here, would be two spots going east, west, and then parking, right, I don't know, can you see my cursor?
Yeah, and so will that brick, will that brickwork extend then into where? Do we want, it won't? It'll just be blacked up?
Correct.
What would be here then, where these parking spaces are now, would be an outdoor seating area? And then where this area where my cursor is would then become that parking pushed out from the building.
Right, which is the other drawing that you had up, the drawing Laura was displaying, your current proposal?
That's correct.
Can we look at that one?
That's correct, and I'll stop.
I mean, we don't have that in the plans, right, so.
No, sorry, I just got.
No, no, but that's fine. I also wouldn't ask.
Does the town have the capability of putting a fog light in, Laura?
Potentially. It's something though that we may want to have MJ engineer for us or something, just to make sure that we're, you know, putting it in the right place and it's in the proper measurements. But yeah, I feel like we could get a fog line up. I know that.
So the concern though is backing out of the perpendicular spaces to the proposed outdoor seating area onto Clifton Park, correct?
I think that was, you know, one of the main, yeah, I mean, I think a lot of people like the idea of outdoor seating as long as we've got a control over it and we allow public input and stuff like that. But yeah, what we brought up was the backing up into Clifton Park.
What about the bank of parking spaces that are on the angled backside of the building? Were those as much a concern as the other ones?
You know, I mean, those are pre-existing. Yeah, we really haven't said anything about those. They essentially have the same problem. I mean, that giant sea of asphalt is, I think, a big problem because cars. But I think already it's going to be better with the curb that the county's put in. That's going to help right at the intersection, but it doesn't help like where Crescent and Clifton Park are coming together. Some definition there is probably still needed.
Laura, I just remember from the review with the police chief of the emergency parking plan that he was a little concerned with that parking space right where it says 18 feet, zero inches.
Yeah, he doesn't like this one.
He was concerned with the sightline of the cars that would be backing out of the angled spaces. That if a car was parked right at the 18 feet, zero inch space, it'll be obstructing the sightline of other cars backing out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually why we removed that space in the emergency plan.
So I think you should be careful to whatever you do, let it run through the course of being reviewed by the police and go through the proper channels.
Laura, who's the fee owner of the proposed, who's the fee owner of the proposed four-slip configuration that we're looking at that the county's proposing?
So I mean, the highway boundary, like there isn't like a property line really that runs between the county-owned part of Knot Street and the Clifton Park. But if you look at the drawing that I have up right here, like that HB, this little dotted line that's running along the sidewalk is the county line. So I mean theoretically you could extend it. So by that extension, the parking spots are probably half in county and half in town. If you're just extending the right of way, there isn't like a true, here's you, here's us, which is true of any of the intersection. I mean, just, you know, go down one to Regent or whatever. You know, there isn't an exact line where the county right of way stops and where the town right of way stops because that's not the way that subdivision maps are made. But if you're just kind of extending the general county right of way, it's probably about half, half. Half county, half town.
So I think the other thing that I think Mr. Nicky's sort of struggling with here is that the outside configuration right now is very dimensional, rectangle. We plopped a rectangle down here, but we're, we're working with a very asymmetrical site. I'm wondering if we could task MJ Engineering or, you know, I'd be happy to be part of like a quick design charrette where, you know, we kind of sketch over this and see if we could reconfigure that to maybe get the parking spaces a little bit more realigned with what the town's concerns are. You know, maybe not necessarily make them directional, but you know, maybe this becomes trapezoidal, gets a little bit more outdoor space, but we sacrifice something else. You know, I agree with Mr. Nicky that having the four feet right up against the building, as soon as a car pulls up, you know, the bumper overhangs, you know, cars are right up against there, you know. So having the barriers up now, I think, is kind of a good training mechanism that's currently underway. But, you know, looking at where this new brick sidewalk is and maybe extending that one side out and then tightening up a little bit and not making the sidewalk so sharp around there, maybe, maybe that's the answer. There's something, something in there and it could be like a win-win for everybody. You might even be able to get another parking space out because we lost one right at that perpendicular corner.
The crosshatch region is planned for outdoor seating.
That's on this plan.
Correct.
But it doesn't have to look like that, right to your point?
No.
You can actually just, maybe even, you know, just talking, you know, just extend those angled parking spots that are pre-existing.
Right.
As far as you can go. And like you said, your, your outdoor seating area isn't rectangular anymore. It's something else.
Yeah, or there's almost something that's similar on Knot Street where they had a small bump out that broke the two sections of parking.
Right.
That may make sense. Maybe there's a tree that gets planted or planters that go there. You know, it's just a first pass at what the outdoor seating could be. A good example in our packet is what Starbucks has done sort of with their residual space around the outdoor seating and the drive-through. They maximized all that outdoor. Around the outdoor seating and the drive-through, they they maximized all that outdoor space and it's it's a little. Different than, you know, what was there and and that that's a good, yeah, so that's a good, that's a great pictorial. But if that was more trapezoidal and the cars were coming in at an angle, you're seeing more of the the front end. Of, you know, that looks like the Volkswagen bug there, you know, coming, you know, pouring almost like more towards the northeast. That might, that may, that may be the answer.
Yep, I I I think to keep a line of cars so they're all parallel. And then whatever the outdoor seating shape ends up being, that makes sense for that.
It would help with the sightlines.
Yeah, no, I mean, the sightline is the biggest problem.
That was the police chief's concern, yeah, that's why we took it off of the emergency approval.
And and the other thing I would hope it would do is that a lot of cars that park in there. Love to do the backup and then the quick U-turn, heading back out towards Not Street, that's, you know, that that's a classic move. That if, you know, somehow we could also try to mitigate some of that action happening. Not necessarily with raised curbs and going to the extent like what the county did, but maybe just the next pass at the reconfiguration of the outdoor space. Being a little bit more trapezoidal, coming towards that brick peninsula where the crosswalk is, i- it just may connect it a little bit better.
I'm not sure what you're proposing, are you trying to encourage traffic to go on Crescent to avoid?
No, not necessarily, but to. To maybe get the parking spaces to be perpendicular, but more towards the angle of. Where the backsides of the buildings are, if that makes sense. Trying to verbally explain it.
No, that makes sense, Dave.
I'd love to get up there and draw on it, but.
Essentially, essentially what you're saying is to have the parking spaces. That uh would run right up next to where the outdoor seating area is, parallel to the street.
No, not 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 parallel, no.
Kind of in the same line with.
Continue the angle for the rear parking, continue the same angle from the rear parking.
Pull them out a little further, so that sidewalk that's currently on the backside of the angular part of the building. If that that, there's no reason that can't be wider, and if that all gets pulled out a little bit and then you lose a little bit of the. The bottom corner where the emergency parking space was removed. But you get a larger area that's more trapezoidal that comes towards a brick peninsula. Then those cars could queue up there, there may be two sections where they're more perpendicular to the angled part of the building. And a little bit less where it comes where the seating areas, but that's okay, it's it's an asymmetrical site.
I can, I can see that.
And that also turns like the cars a bit so you can see better.
Exactly, you get, you get better sightlines and quite frankly, Mr. Nick, I think you would probably. Benefit from it because it would allow you to have maybe like sort of almost like the Starbucks thing, they have various. Forms of outdoor seating that just isn't rigid, so it gives you the flexibility of, you know, you have, you know, maybe some benches in one area near some planters. That's a, you know, a little bit more, uh, you know, hi- higher turnover for people that are getting ice cream.
Yeah, exactly, something that's more more ice cream focused and something more.
It skews, it skews the seating more toward Not Street too. It's more visible from the road and everything, yeah.
Correct, so.
So Laura, I do think with this discussion and maybe if it makes sense to Mr. Nikki, we can modify that drawing, then we could tell the county, hey, you know what, don't. You know, forget about those four spots.
I think we can say this is what we're thinking, like what's the impacts to you, like if you wait, like what's the impacts to the town? And just, you know, have a discussion with them, cuz they did reach out, they already recognized that we're doing things, um, but, um. I just like, just, and I know that you guys said it multiple times, but when we get a plan that we, you know, that we like, we also still. That will be the modification that's proposed to the special use permit, and we'd have public hearings and go to the town board.
In my opinion, even if it was striped and then the barriers were put back, I don't think that that's that big of a deal, it's it's four spaces, striping is reversible. You know, I would, I would say let the county. Finish their plan, going through a change order process with them, just maybe more cumbersome than it's worth. But let them finish it, once the barriers go there, I I think since we've got good communication with the county, we'll keep them involved. You know, if there's a subsequent meeting with Mr. Nikki and the and the planning board to go through some of those iterations. It would show them that they're committed to this plan. And then when you go back to the county and say, hey, look, we're able to only lose between two spaces or maybe three tops. There's definitely been an exercise that has demonstrated that we've looked at various options.
Okay, I've got two concerns.
Put the microphone up closer to you, please.
I have two major concerns, one is we've already lost a significant amount of parking, so I'm not so cavalier about losing, oh, just another four spaces. I think that's gonna harm the businesses that are already there. And I know they're worried about it. They made it very clear that they're worried about parking. And people aren't taking to the new configuration yet, and I'm not sure how many will. But aside from that, I'm worried, the basic issue here, whether we can allow this or are we just helping to create. What they used to call an attractive nuisance. By allowing this outdoor seating adjacent to parking. It's not the norm. I know one other place where we have it, I don't remember if that was approved or not.
Well, we, you know.
But it's, it's a concern, it's a safety issue, I would like to have the police input on that point itself.
Yeah, well, we got temporary approval and that and that's where we're at today, right, so we're gonna continue on with that.
But we're talking about the future.
Well, the future, that's what we're talking about and we just mentioned it to Mr. Nikki that we need information, like how many parking spaces we're gonna lose, a proposal. It's not planning board's job to do the design work, you know, I know you, Dave wants to help, but it's not our job to do the design work.
Right, yeah, I mean, we've given some recommendations.
You know, you you come in with, you know, some suggestions that we had tonight and and then we have to do the parking spot count. So we know where we're at and if the planning board is comfortable, uh, and we have our public hearing, we'll we'll hear Mr. Mrs. Gold about. Who's concerned about the loss of parking and whether there is an impact or not.
Yeah, and Leslie, you're right, I mean, in my mind, when I was talking, when the words I was using when I was describing with Mr. D R P, you know. I knew that we're gonna lose parking spots. But something has to give, at least to get a plan on the table that we, the public, others can weigh in on.
Exactly.
Well, my concern is this is being treated as though there's a right to have this outdoor seating and there isn't. It's something to be considered, but it needs to be looked at very objectively, and I don't feel that's being done.
Uh, yeah, my view is that there is no right, that's why we're we're here tonight and that's why Mr. Nikki's working on this. To work through it and that's why we're gonna have two public hearings, one at the town, planning board level, one at the town board level. And that's part of the process, so he has a right to go through the process and that's what we're doing.
But I I just wanna disagree with you a little bit about it not being the norm, because I think the places that we have outdoor seating in the town. Like Starbucks is a good example, we added outdoor, I mean, Tequila's has that, you know, porch. Places where we've added outdoor seating, we have done so in order to create a sense of place. And I think that the co-op is really primed to be the center of town, it's in our town center overlay district. But there isn't a lot of things that are drawing people to walk and to participate in the co-op. And to truly like spend time there, and so I think that if you put outdoor seating and it's done thoughtfully. And it has public input and it, you know, minimizes the parking, but really invites that downtown. I completely disagree that it's negatively going to impact the businesses, I think it'll bring people to stay. And you'll actually get more people using those businesses because they're out walking and they're just gonna grab and pick stuff up. And it's gonna invite a whole different type of um consumer and activity to the plaza. I think it really does have to be reviewed carefully, but I disagree with you that it's not the norm.
Um, I didn't catch where you said there's on a porch.
Tequila's.
They've got a deck.
Yeah, deck.
Parking does not about that, there's a line, there's roadway, but there's not parking hitting into it. Um, Tai Tai Bistro was up on the sidewalk. Starbucks is a little different, but Starbucks has its own fencing around and all, the parking. It's nearby, but.
Sidewalk, I mean, that's a, it's a sea of pavement, I personally think that if we do it right, the town benefits from something there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to see what it looks like, a better parking, we've agreed that the the previous plan you were showing Laura, the parking is a little. It's it's very suboptimal. So let's see a different plan, which means that the outdoor seating area shape is gonna change and let's just see what it looks like.
Yeah, let's just, you know, move it forward and take it through the process, yeah.
But we all know parking has been an issue on our site for a long time. And we're losing a dozen spaces already, so it's a concern.
Yep, and it's, it was a concern during the original approvals for the broken, as as Mr. Nikki knows, that was one of the. Primary points of discussion and concerns for all of us.
Yeah, go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, I just wanna echo um some of what you're saying, Laura, I think um. We're moving in the general direction of progress with the changes we're discussing, I'm very supportive of. The um temporary emergency authorization granted to Mr. Nikki and. I think to a certain degree, some of the por- parking re- reorganization is just gonna be born out of necessity for now. But um. I feel compelled to just, uh, once again, sort of um, put this up here and, um, you know. I think this really demonstrates how much extra room we have in this area. This proposal here, I counted the number of spaces, would add twelve parking spaces. This is a a concept plan developed by MJ Engineering a year ago. Um, in the hopes that we could sort of piggyback an additional three hundred thousand dollars in costs on. To the county project and, you know, really fix a trouble area in the town center. So um, I just throw this up there to kind of remind the group of what's possible. And also, just kind of as a kind of point of curiosity for myself and. Kind of better understanding what is possible in the town. Right of way, I wanted to specifically draw attention to the proposed raised island. That I think could help define, uh, better define, you know. Crescent Road and Clifton Park Road from the area that's safe to park in. Um, this proposed raised island here as well as a proposed raised island a little further down Clifton Park Road. I think could go a long way to just creating some more safe traffic patterns. And I wonder, um, you know, aside from all of the regrading that was quoted by MJ Engineering, landscaping, new signage, a traffic circle. And and so on, if a raised island. A a much, a much more of a bootstrap budget could um achieve some of the same ends, at least temporarily if. If conceptually, we could kind of agree on the location of that island, it would seem to me that. Between the two concept plans that MJ Engineering designed for us. The proposed raised island is proposed to be located in the same spot. Uh, so, so I think that that um very low cost uh element of this larger proposal. I think could go a long way to just at least defining sort of. Um, the roadway from the parking lot. But anyway, that's sort of just my two cents and, um, you know. Um, I'm encouraged also by uh the fact that. Mr. Nikki has engaged MJ Engineering and so there is some continuity there in terms of them have already. Acquainted themselves with this area of town and and proposed other conceptual plans. Um, I just hope that, you know, this plan um can be revived at some point or perhaps even. Uh, sort of used as a a reference point for a long-term planning objective.
Patrick, leave that up for a minute, would you please, thank you, and and I agree with what you're saying there, uh, on this plan, is there any, um. Physical changes to the road, uh, or is it just, it has to be, it has to be moved?
No, this is some pretty physical changes to the road, so, um, yeah, so where Crescent is coming and hitting Clifton Park. You can kinda see the lighter line that's sort of encompassing the stop sign, which is again, the highway boundary. That right now is trees and there's a fair amount of trees that go in, so this. Realignment would be removing several of the trees that's on the sort of triangle intersection and then making it a perpendicular intersection.
Yeah, what I was trying to get, if there was a way to like, uh, you know, satisfy the the request of the applicant and everybody by moving this forward without. Spending a lot of money, like Patrick was saying, by just by striping, if everything was striped and delineated, you know, if that was possible to do that. At a lower cost, that would, you know, be a good way to, you know, satisfy everybody would.
But I think that road has to get turned to make it.
The road has to get turned.
I think in order to put the parking in perpendicularly along like that alleyway, you do have to. To repave where that road hits.
Yeah, and is this gonna have an impact on Gil King's parking?
No, her parking is essentially on private property, um, down the, um, on the.
Yeah, but access to it, right?
Which Gail King she has, she's at two locations.
Yeah, it's kind of like, do you see where that crosswalk is tilted on Patrick's screen? Her parking is just above that sidewalk, so there's no.
So you'd have to connect the parking lots, you have to give people access to her parking.
No, because hers is private, hers is to support her, her. Um, so none of these proposals close off that.
Yeah, that's just stra- uh, a crosswalk pictured, right, you can still drive through.
Yeah, you would never be able to close off that alleyway, like none of these proposals.
Right, yeah, so it'll be access to the alleyway.
Always, yes, always, we couldn't, we, none of the proposals close off the alleyway, I think that's the only way the co-op gets its delivery trucks.
Well, yeah, they they get deliveries in the back and then they can get the box truck can back in off of. Off of Not Street towards the dumpster area.
And there's also residents in those buildings that park their cars in the back, that's where they, that's their, you know, allotted spot for the. You would never be able to close that alleyway off.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we had an overlay of what's existing now on top of this one for one. So you could see what, you know, so any actions that we take, you know, again, if the, if it would satisfy the applicant and everybody. We could at least move part of it forward, the end thought and mind, you know.
And with, when with some sacrifice for the parking spaces that are adjacent to the building, Mr. Nikki can get his outdoor seats.
Yep, and and I mean, the seating shown here, right, I mean, that's the tr- trapezoid or.
Well, I don't think the outdoor seating shown here, right?
No, not on that one, that's the MJ one.
Yeah, but I mean, you can see where it could go.
Yeah, I think, um. Tommy, maybe a couple other design drawings with, you know, some of the, these proposals taken into account for us review, but I wouldn't. Worry about not moving forward because the county's striping those parking spots.
No problem, and again, that was the guidance I was looking for, because again, we were told to stripe, but if we striped, then we would essentially be. Uh, cutting into their striping or vice versa.
Well, I mean, in that last one that Mr. McPartland had up, and thanks for showing that, Patrick, the county parking spots were there effectively, right?
Yeah, yeah, you didn't, when we were doing that, um, Tommy wasn't here.
So I think, I think what you're saying, Mr. McPartland, is that, you know, Mr. Nikki should use that drawing with MJ Engineering. And come up with something.
Yeah, and also I just, you know, M- Ms. Gold raised the concern of losing one or two parking spaces and. In the short term, that could be the the impact of the proposed emergency authorizations here. But we just need to keep in mind that this whole Crescent Road, Clifton Park. Area of sea of pavement, if you will, is characterized by a lot of excess space that should and could be turned into parking. And and I just, I hope we don't lose sight of that, and I think there's a lot of low-cost ways to accomplish that that. Really, I don't think require much more engineering.
I mean, I think striping, instead of turning the road and a plan like that could work. I mean, it reminds me of the mega striping that happened on St. David's Lane and, uh, console, right? It was a, it's a huge art. Cut out to make that, you know, almost perpendicular.
To define it because it was just.
And it seems to work.
I'd like to also say that, um, I'd be very excited to see the outside seating happen, I think that would be really exciting. Um, I think we're so long overdue for stuff like this, I've been in this community my entire life and I think it'd be really exciting to see that. And I also think that we should remember that there's gonna be public hearings happening and I think it's gonna be interesting to hear the wisdom of. Um, our neighbors to see what their thoughts are and that could completely change. Maybe the uh direction we're doing with the parking, maybe they will come up with something insightful. That will help us develop that as well, but um, I'm all for moving forward and 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 hoping this goes, um, this goes Mr. Nikki's way, I'd like to see it happen.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so as far as tonight, Mr. Nikki, do you have any direction, do you have any questions, are we moving it forward?
No, I have, I I have a lot of direction in terms of what I can now present and how I should now present. No, I have, I have a lot of direction in terms of what I can now present and how I should now present it. So I appreciate that. I also wanted to thank you for the emergency approval. I can tell you, I'm not just on behalf of myself, but parents and children who have been safely sitting and having ice cream over the past week or two weeks that what we've done is working and has made our community safer. And I appreciate that we didn't have to wait until today to first get the permission to do that.
No, thank you. You're welcome. The thing here is, you know, it's going to take some time, obviously, with the two public hearings. So we got to get it, you know, to a point where we're ready to call for the public hearing. So we need some, like you said, some sketches based on what we just discussed and, you know, give you some feedback. And it doesn't happen, have, have to happen in a meeting. You know, I say have some separate meetings if needed and we'll keep it moving forward.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nicky. Anything else, David? Anybody? Anybody on the board? Any other questions or comments on this project? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nicky. All right. We'll move on and we'll look forward to some updated sketches to keep this moving forward, Broken End. So next we have 2837 Aqueduct Road. That's Rivers Ledger Senior Center Site Plan Approval for a 66 apartment unit building containing a 2,000 square foot of mixed-use commercial space. And there's a 3,000 square foot commercial outbuilding part of this package. And we have Mr. Pufunde representing, or Mr. Funde, the applicant, representing the applicant.
How's it going, everyone? Laura, do you have the, oh, perfect. So the last meeting, we kind of concluded about looking at.
Could you pull your microphone up, please? Thank you very much.
Looking at the architectural design, the board had brought up to our attention about the ZBA process with bringing the building height and trying to look at what we could do to reduce that. Look at how we could approach, you know, the overall outlook on the architectural design meeting the original PDD and how vertical height kind of came into, into life on that. And what we had presented was is a couple different renditions of the building design that shows the original design with the peaked roofs, which is at the 41 feet, which would request a variance of six feet. And then the next rendition is removing that to get it within the required code. As, as discussed at the previous meeting, you know, what, where we're at with requesting the third story in this building rendition is just because of, you know, the amount of property we've lost through the original, you know, design process in the PDD, going through the process with Army Corps of Engineers, availability of wetland credits, the property essentially got cut in half. And, you know, there's at least now a design for, you know, what our Plan A is, which what we think would better serve the community and the, the look of the, what the original PDD had requested, which was a rural residential design. Then the second rendition, which is what we feel is not giving the community and our residents what we feel is architecturally, you know, a superior product. We did look into David's, you know, opinion and, and some of the different ideas that the board had given us with different roofline approaches. We worked with our design build partner, BBL, our architect, HCP, looked at different roofline approaches, which would essentially bring the roofline into the third story. One, we didn't really like the architectural look of those, which is there's a community right across the street. You think it kind of takes away from that like row style housing, the rural housing that we were going for. And then also it's extremely expensive because you're taking panelized construction away and you're kind of custom framing the entire third story, which would have put us over our budget to make, puts us back really in the original sense of why we went for the third story. So it kind of threw over the overall project budget. What I also had put together was just a couple perspective outlooks on like a cut section of the development, which we have done before with planning boards and zoning boards. Zooming in on the right-hand side, we're looking at the perspective of Aqueduct Road. We took into account elevations of finished floor. So finished floor being base control elevation zero. The road, if you scroll over a little more, Laura, to the right, is a plus four. So there's a four-foot elevation difference from Aqueduct Road to finished floor. So actual travel sightlines, which are represented in the yellow angled sightlines there, are giving you really a perspective when deducting the four feet away of more in the realm of a two-foot variance prospectively, right? On the backside of the building, it is actually the opposite from the bike trail. The bike trail right now is four foot lower than finished floor due to a retaining wall brake line in the topo. What we plan on doing and is already representative in the drawings is you would have four foot of some type of wall block, allen block, ready rock, something that is architecturally appeasing. And also we had some screening trees that are proposed, which would screen the bike path and the fire lane from the fire lane. What we believe is, is from those perspectives of the bike trail, same thing, taking into account sightlines, a lot of the building height would be blocked out through the vertical height of the retaining wall and some of the plantings that are proposed. On the opposite side, right-hand side, as you come, if you're looking at the building, which would be closest to the roundabout, all the property that was originally proposed to be developed is staying forever wild due to the high concentration of wetlands and the absence of wetland credits. So really, the, the building would be screened from that approach of Aqueduct Road just by the, the vertical canopy, which was also representative in the cut section that's proposed in the new renditions. We had represented about the canopy height at around 40 feet, 45 feet, as you can see there.
Do you have an approximate distance from the edge of Aqueduct Road to the face of the building? Just approximate, approximate?
I think there. So you have, we could calculate it at least from the dumbbell, right Brett? So you got 20 feet of parking stall. You got a 24-foot travel lane. And then what do you think you got from the parking stall?
20, around 18, 18, 14. So you're at six feet, just for the pavement. Plus you're, for the main bulk of the building, you have about another 15, 20. So.
Over 100 feet? By the time you took the green space off a shoulder road.
Do you know what the view would be for our neighbors across the river and out plus?
Yeah. So the tree, the trees right now that are on the high part of where the fitness center or rec building was going to be are uncleared and undisturbed. So those trees right now on the high end of the pond are existing there. And there's also the added trees that we are adding due to the fitness resolution, which was, that building was added to the original PDD a couple planning board meetings ago.
About how high are those trees? Will they be above the potential 41 feet or below?
Yes.
They are?
Yep. So yeah, most of, to, to your point, Ms. Gold, most of the trees would also be blocking the backside of the building as well. Just not from the perspective of somebody traveling down the bike trail.
That's what I thought, but it's good to hear. Thank you.
And there are things as far as lighting. I mean, obviously each apartment will have lighting, but we know that people will tend to close blinds and things at night. But there'd be no like floods or any exterior lighting on the building up high that would impact across the river?
No, the only, the only lights that, right now, we have no porches or decks proposed. We changed everything out to like Juliet balconies. So you wouldn't even have like the code man pack lights or, you know, porch lights on the decks that you typically would have.
Yep. And if we, Laura, if you can pull up the full site plan that shows this building relative to the, all the other buildings. So it's kind of, yeah, because it's, it's kind of to the west, right? So it'd be to the west of the site, right? Yeah, that was close enough because we know where it's going. I guess what, yeah, that's kind of where it's going over, even though that shows.
That was the old rendition, which is kind of showing what the, what I'm referencing is the original, the original development plan when we went through with the PDD, which, you know, this proposal was cut in half.
Yeah, I don't think there's a full drawing of the entire property with the new.
But that's close enough. It kind of gives you an idea where it's located relative to the other buildings, you know, that may cause some of the potential light pollution that concern, you know.
This is the updated landscaping plan, but the new building's going, you know, down in the little corner.
So, so look, I gotta ask one question and I wasn't here the last time. Your second revision actually had 60 apartments.
Yes.
And this current one has 66.
Yes.
Did 60 apartments work economically for you guys?
60 apartments worked economically, but what, what it is, is it's a square footage ratio to unit count. So really the square footage that we added to add the, what, what we, the last meeting, I was explaining that the dumbbell ends that were added to this building were added from an architectural sense of breaking up the length of it. We, we thought the length of the building was, you know, boring, to say the least. And when I had originally brought the building design to the board, it was before we added color. It was a black and white sketch. Peter and I had released the architects to add like materials to it. That's when we got the colored rendering. We weren't really in love with it. We thought it was very boring. It wasn't architecturally pleasing. So we went back, kind of started from scratch, scrapped the original design, added the barbell ends and we essentially broke the building up with like a row house design. And that's when we added that gabled roof section, which, you know, pushes us over about six feet vertically at 41 foot height. And that's where we're at today.
Okay. So for completeness, does dropping six apartments on the third floor allow you to lower the height with the nicer roofline at all to kind of come to an average of something lower than 41?
We could look at that. I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know if that, how that would help though, from the square footage to unit count. Because essentially you may be removing some trusses. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that with BBL.
Well, the other thing you mentioned last time is that you had more two-bedroom apartments there, right?
Yes, yes.
And so, I mean, obviously another option is, you know, smaller units, so.
Right. And that, and that's not what we're trying to do on this building. I kind of explained that before. You know, if, if we were worried about, super worried about budget, a developer would pivot to, as Mr. Walsh had said, one-bedroom outlook. What we've found in, at Starbuck Island with our senior restricted development is they want two-bedroom apartments. They want the extra space for storage and they also, a lot of folks that we had living at a residence slept in separate rooms.
Starbuck Island has flat roofs though, right?
They have parapet style roofs, yep. But we, you know, when we architecturally designed that, we, we looked at it, it was in more in an urban area. Where, you know, this corridor in Niskiuna, like the PDD had stated, we think it would be better off with some type of pitched roof design. There is a, there's, there's a pivot option, but I just, you know, after the last meeting, we thought that the, the board's, you know, approach was, is that they, they liked the pitch style roof.
Yeah.
But the concern was is leading us down, you know, a rabbit hole where you folks, you know, had said before, you, you gentlemen, go too far. You know, we have to take in, you have to take into account that there's another board that you'd have to apply variance on. And, and that's when we, you know, we did these renditions, we talked internally, we looked at the different options. Right now, we feel that we're providing Niskiuna and the board with the, the most superior product that we can. And if you folks agree with this product, we'd love to, you know, take our shot with the, the zoning board, explain the story, explain where we're at and see if there's anything we can do there with gaining a variance.
The, I'm just thinking a moment here. The, as far as schedule goes, you know, tonight's for discussion only because we've already basically going to miss the ZBA meeting this month because it's Wednesday this week, so we wouldn't have time. So we'll be making, you know, if you want to go forward with REV3 and look for our recommendation, we'll make, make the recommendation at our next meeting, which is 7/11. And then you'll, that'll be in time for you to be at the 7/20 zoning board of appeals meeting. So we have a little bit of time, you know, between now and the next meeting.
Yeah.
In case there's any changes. One thing I had the planning office take a look at today, I remembered that building on River Road, the medical office building, 2125 on River Road, had a height variance. So Mr. Henry looked it up and it was, turns out that that building, again, 35-foot requirement is at 47-foot. And I remember back when that applicant came in, the reasoning for their request was because of the medical office and air conditioning. They didn't want to have a lot of rooftop stuff. They want to be able to put ducting between the floors. And so they said they, they wanted the building to be higher than 35 feet, so it would look good and serve the purpose of a medical office type building. And that, ZB, the ZBA at that time did grant that variance. That building is about 235 feet off the road. I just wanted to put that out there to the planning board. To go take a look at 2125, the medical office building on River Road, that's 47 feet. So the, the proposal is for six feet lower, but you can get an idea of what, you know, basically 40-plus feet looks like just to help in the decision process. Okay?
What was that?
Chairman.
With Knott Street East, Mr. Chairman?
Knott Street East. I believe they redesigned the roof trusses, right? And kind of dropped the.
They came out the code, right?
Yes, so Knott Street East, I believe we actually recommended that the zoning board grant the height variance because we found that buildings with underground parking tend to need a height variance because you can't dig them any farther into the earth, but the zoning board denied it. And then I think we even tried again and the zoning board denied it again, which is why they had to modify the roof the way that they did.
So, so one, one, I'm sorry.
Mr. Slum?
But yeah, I just wanted to ask the question, Kevin, with the research on River, that wasn't a PUD, was it?
No, and I'm not, I, I think that's, especially, what was the zoning over there? It was neighborhood commercial, yeah, neighborhood commercial, but there are residences in the area across the street and along the, along the side, you know, up the road a little bit. So there is a residential flair over there also that we had to take into consideration. But I just point that out just to take a look so you can get an idea of what 47 feet looks like. So help for the.
Yeah, definitely. I'm glad you also pointed out the distance from the road. It does have that advantage.
Now, for the, your proposal, the air conditioning units, are they at each, at each apartment has their own is outside? Or is it a central unit?
I have to ask BBL. I don't, after you brought that up, I was thinking of that myself. And I would guess they'd be on the backside of the buildings, but I'd have to ask those questions.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to know where they're located. I mean, is there any space above the third floor and, and for putting those units or?
I'd have to ask, yeah. And that, and sometimes what we do is even with these gabled roofs, they, they still come up and give the resemblance of a asphalt shingle roof, right? But then they fall back and you have some flat section as well. But I'd have to ask them where that stands in this design, you know, or in the rendition portion, but I can start.
Yeah, I mean, because obviously if we make a recommendation and later on we find out that it's going to kind of look like that from the front, but then there's all these air handling units hanging off the back or, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it'd be good to have that information.
Yeah.
No, I think like Mr. Leacy had his project on Eastern Parkway. They're small units that are in a mechanical closet in the space. They're air conditioning and these are about the same sizes. RTUs. If you have a false, be almost be like a false gabled mansard that goes back down, that's really just a, a well of a roof. It's not much different than the second iteration, which is the flat roof, which, you know, doesn't have a delineated cornice on it. You'd have all your air handling units up on top. They'd be visible based on the size. So then again, you'd want to have a higher cornice to try to mask that. So. Yeah, you usually try to hide them to like for. Get them into the middle. Yeah, like rendition B, which is like a standard minimal parapet, you would hide those RTUs towards the back section of the building. And rendition A, if it's a bathtub-style room where the parapets are a little higher to give the false impression of a gabled roof section, those would be self-contained within the vertical height. But I'll, I'll ask them what they plan on from a design build to MEP.
Yeah, it, it'll be good to pin that down. I mean, and I think Chris from email interchanges, I think you share this. I'm more okay going forward with the recommendation to the ZBA for the gable, you know, the pitch roof. But I think we've got a little bit of a catch-22 in that there is a solution in front of the ZBA that actually meets the code. And so it boils down to the aesthetic of the roof stuff. Agreed?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, Leslie's right. I'm pretty sure that the medical office building is RP, residential professor, which I actually think is also the same zoning as Lou Leacy's building on 1769 Union Street, which that one has a height variance of maybe, do you remember what that one was? Maybe 40? It, I actually think that one is in the 40, 41 range, 1769.
No, we can get that information. You know, we can get some email exchanges. We'll get that information at Leacy Building with the.
Those are the RP zones.
With the ZBA ended up there and then information on air handling units or HVAC, whatever.
I think those air handling units will be an important factor.
Right, that that's a good point that Mr. Khan brings up, because if you have a bank of air handlers at ground level. They're gonna be noisy for the lower level units that face, depending which side they're gonna be on. There's gonna be a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look into that.
Yeah, looking at, we could email and Laura can share, you know, what what you come up with with everybody before the next meeting.
Yep. Yeah, and I mean, to the point of uh that there's uh a s- a a workable option proposed. You know, our our approach is is we're trying to be transparent to the zoning board, you know. No reason to not try to show every.
No, no, I agree, agreed.
Hopefully they see the same, the same approach and the same light for the community that the planning board would see and. You know, just trying to be transparent with them going into it.
Yeah.
We appreciate your transparency.
Yep.
Noted.
Yep.
Yep. What else? Uh as far as uh updates or anything we need to talk about tonight, Mr. Islam, do you have anything?
Uh regarding this project?
Yes.
Um, no, I, no, I I don't, you know, the only concern I, not concern. I I don't how, I don't know how often our zoning board reviews a PUD. You know, and I'm sure that with Clark and Laura and all the work that goes into understanding or providing understanding to each board. And the backdrop where this was a hundred units with two large obstructions, uh you know, this is now one footprint. Um the PUD in of itself has some unique circumstances that. Add a tremendous amount of variation to our, let's say, our standards in the benefit of a unique development. You know, so I just, I just wanna make sure that it's clearly understood to them that this is a PUD and that there's a different circumstance associated with it.
Well, I'm sure Laura will be there to 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 help out.
And we can put those things in our recommendation and the nice, well, I don't know, nice, but an area variance is a balancing test. So um, you know, if if the applicant can mitigate. The the height variance in one way is balanced, but the other things, it's not a use variance, so that's, that's an area variance.
So so in addition to the air handling units and and. Uh you know, I'm just gonna recommend, but I I'd like somebody else to offer their voice on this. We had brought it up earlier. Similar to what you did in the sightlines for from the bike path to Aqueduct.
Yes, sir.
Is it? A lot of work for you to at least establish what the sightline is to across the the folks on across the Mohawk uh.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
I I think for completeness and and if there's a, I think you'd probably wanna show that.
Yeah, we can.
Including the tree line, right?
Correct, yeah, I believe we can. I mean, we don't have survey over there, but can we grab two-foot contours off GIS or something? Okay, yeah, so we can get it to the nearest two feet.
Yeah, Chris, that makes sense to you? I I think we do.
Yep, I I do and we al- already know what colors are more visible across the river. Uh I know that the uh athletic building's not built yet, correct, Chuck?
No, it is not.
Right, yeah, so I mean, there's, it's, yeah, so the, some sort of workout would be very helpful, I agree with.
Yeah, I mean, since this is going in front of the ZBA and also I think for the public and the the concerns that are raised before.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And then a aside from that, like new news, we, Laura, Clark and I have started the process with uh the TDE. Engaging the Weston Sampson with the site plan.
Yeah.
Um pending, you know, this, the ZBA process and the discussion on the. The vertical height of the building and what the planning board decides to to um, you know. Table a decision on, we at least aren't changing the envelope of the building, so we're gonna try to proceed with. Getting everything technically figured out with the site plan and where it's going.
So so one last thing, I think, I think a, you know, a big positive, it's it's no additional work, just questions. I think a big positive here is the fact that. Most of our wetlands are gonna be preserved, the green that goes along with that. So let me ask you the question specifically, for the current design with the sixty-six on this footprint, sixty-six apartments. Is there any wetland disturbance?
There is.
Okay.
There's a, there's a wetland disturbance. I don't know of the number of acres uh that we're disturbing. I think it's in the realm of three acres of wetlands. Which was where we.
No, three was the original.
Oh, one point five.
Okay, and this is gonna get mitigated at an other location, is that the plan?
So we have, we have purchased wetland credits through the Wetland Trust Bank. Um so that takes care of the actual, they they take our money, they they do what they do with it, uh establish new wetlands in another area. Um there's also a stream that's being impacted, uh it's two hundred and fifty feet long. We had uh that you have to mitigate a stream impact one for one. Um latest news on that was as I reached out to Steve Feeney with Schenectady County. Kinda see if he had any local projects in the area that would kind of facilitate this one-for-one mitigation. Um give me a ha- gave me a handful of them. The one that we had picked and and worked out with Army Corps of Engineers was uh the AF, AFP, American. Uh the animal shelter across the river, the Mohawk River in Scotia, which is right around the corner from the development. It was geographically close. Um they were a nonprofit, couldn't afford the the impact that was causing them. They were about to lose the back area for the the dogs. And uh through removing the stream, undermining the fence. So we did a design on that, met with Army Corps and DEC. They concurred that the project. Fits the criteria and we just submitted the design this afternoon over to Army Corps and DEC.
All right. Excellent.
That's good. All right, um let me open it up for the board. Anybody have any questions for the applicant or wanna comment on the uh? I mean, we're gonna go forward with the make a recommendation on the height variance, assuming uh there's no surprises on the air handling equipment. Anybody have any questions or concerns with that?
I would, I would just ask maybe an update, um what's your take rate? Are you filling before they go online?
Yeah, so we uh we're just climbed over fifty-five signed leases. Um we're now kinda turning over one building every three weeks. So we're, we're, you know, the, it's obviously a demand right now that we're seeing at all our apartment complexes. There's a housing crisis, as everybody knows, not a, can't build them quick enough. Everybody's kinda. Uh we have a little bit of a waiting list right now at our other communities and Rivers Ledges, you know, taking the same, the same reaction. So residents are very happy, they're, they're happy that the landscaping's finally starting to commence, starting to clean up. Um we just finished paving the the trail section down at Aqueduct Park. Today, they paved the parking lot where the road club is. Uh we're making the final connections for the bathroom, taking it off the septic system and onto the E-one system.
Yeah.
Um. And really just kinda cleaning up loose ends as we wait for finishes to commence in the second phase, which is the last eighty units that are starting to. Get ready for COs, so.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it's. Sorry, Chris, good.
I could be, I just wanna, I have, I have a follow-up. It would be worth having. Um what percentage of those are Niskiuna residents? If there wa- if you had that number handy, it would be worth uh perhaps sharing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh I'll, I'll ask property management if they can put something together on that for a statistic.
They're all Niskiuna residents now.
Yeah.
True. You know, the whole idea is to provide some alternatives to our, our resident, our current residents, whether it be apartments or senior center. And I personally have come across several folks that are. Looking for an alternative place to live in Niskiuna with the conveniences and Rivers Ledge is on the list. And I just was curious what the numbers really were.
Yeah, the the last few communities, including Rivers Ledge, you're getting like that mix in demographic where. Apartments used to have the mindset where they looked negatively at communities because, you know. It was just a cash cow for a developer and, you know. Some people, you know, only certain demographics of people rented them and and whatnot. Single-family homes were better at for community. Where now you're starting to see a lot of like young college kids that are coming out, new professionals, they use it as like a stepping stone. Right, they live in an apartment, they like these communities because they got the resort-style living, they got high amenities. Garages, everything, you know, the luxury is of life. And then, you know, they stop in those communities, they live there for a while, and then a lot of our residential real estate brokers are. Turning around and selling them a single-family home in the same community that they got an apartment in. And then the other demographic is those like that just went through it. When the market's right, they sell their house for a lot of money. They don't wanna buy a new house for a lot of money, so they're moving into a community like Rivers Ledge. And uh they're uh empty nesters, people that sent their kids off to college and. You know, don't wanna maintain a home anymore.
But they, but they really.
He's tap dancing.
Maybe you should check. I don't know.
Yeah, no, so that, so that sounds good, yeah, that, and that's good comment, uh Mr. Islam had, just curious, I say how many. From Niskiuna staying in Niskiuna, uh that's good information.
Yeah.
Um so, no other questions at all for the applicant? No, so what we'll do is uh we'll be making our recommendation at the next meeting, which is uh.
Yeah.
Uh July eleventh and, you know, be on the agenda for the uh July twentieth, the zoning board of appeals. Um I can tell you I can get there, uh I'd like to hear, you know, about the HVAC, but, you know, I'm I'm leaning in, you know, positive uh. Personally, uh from my personal standpoint.
I'm in a similar place.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, Chris, you're in a similar place too, right?
Yeah, based on my comments, emailing, what I just said, yeah, I I am definitely in that place. I just want the. It is a lot of, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of background. This was a very large project for many years. The ZBA I don't think have that background, you know, so it's one of those very, you know. It's always important to articulate the story, but this one is a pretty big story.
Hey, thank you. Okay, and thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Yeah, oh Chairman, I just wanna, I've got up on the screen the landscaping plan.
Oh.
Um because I knew that, you know, this this com- this board took comments from, you know, people on, all over the place. And one of the comments was, you know, the headlights and the lighting from Rivers Ledge, and so the Tree Council. Has been working really hard on this for a long time, gone back and forth with the developer a lot. Um but you can see that that they've added buffering on every single parking space that faces, that faces out to the river. And pretty extensive, it's a combination of conifers and grasses and. Well, two different types of evergreens and imperennials and then sometimes deciduous, but. And all of it's like between four and six height feet high, so that should actually block the headlights immediately and like. You can see like, it's really, it's any place that the lights can go out. They've added this screening.
Beautiful.
It's excellent.
So took a while, Tree Council worked really hard, developers are spending a lot more on landscaping, but.
Yeah, I mean, and and look, it's part of Chris's um comments, right? There's, there is a very long story here.
Yeah.
Right? Uh but not just length of time, but also a lot of um, a lot of feedback and accommodation from the developer. Right, to get this to be, you know, the best that it could be for the surrounding community. With even the kind of issues that were raised across the river, et cetera. This is another example of it, right? So we, we hope we can communicate all that clearly to the ZBA as, you know, that. That that very rich history is there.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, uh let's see, moving. Yep, and Ms. Gold will, um would you like to come up, Ms. Gold?
Okay.
Ms. Gold will take your seat. Yep, no problem, Mr. Charlie Tennis, thank you and have a good evening, and Ms. Gold will will uh will take uh your seat.
Yeah, Nancy, now you can just bring the microphone right over to you.
All right, okay, so next up we have, let's see, is um twenty-five thirty, twenty-five thirty-eight River Road, that's Kelts Farm subdivision. And we're ready for an application here for approval of the final uh major subdivision of the Average Dency Development. And I'm sure, do we have anybody online with us tonight? Mr. uh Bazoin or uh? Any member, anybody representing? Okay, I'm not sure, was he, did he say he was gonna be tonight?
I'm not sure, he normally comes. That may have been my fault for not.
But that, but that's okay, I mean, we, I think we know enough to to keep it moving forward, right, so. Dave, you wanna take it uh and I can help out?
Okay, sure. So um, looks like he's going for the final um. Platte approval, correct?
Yep.
And let's see, so recently. He has, let's see, I gotta get up to speed.
Yeah, I can also help out.
Yeah.
If you look at page two.
Page two, so he's got uh four bullet points that he was looking, um he's gonna be using black chain link fence. With a double five-foot wide swinging gates as opposed to split rail fencing. It's an upgrade of um the requirement that needs to do there.
Well, actually, the highway department won't approve that.
Oh.
They wanna prove the the black fence?
No, he said he has to stick with the split rail.
Oh, does? Oh.
Yeah, Ray said that, yeah.
Was there a reason?
Um, I think maintenance.
Oh, really?
Oh, because it's in the right of way for them to maintain, or is it?
Actually, the the town ends up owning it and it's, it's prob- it's harder for them to maintain the chain link fences.
And and the concern from Joel uh was that the split rail was not available. That's why he was gonna go to the.
Yeah.
To the black uh.
I I already informed Joel that the highway department.
Okay, did you? Okay.
Okay.
It's one bullet down.
Okay.
I mean, I feel like the planning department probably doesn't care.
Right.
Necessarily.
Um, okay, and uh second bullet point was that there had been some plantings and there were some company photographs that were sent out earlier. Uh some oak trees in the cul-de-sac and then if you've driven along. The road on the left-hand side up on the berm, there have been uh several evergreens that have been uh been planted. Uh bike path in front of the homes was uh over paved width-wise, and that'll be a discussion point that we, we cover here shortly. Uh it was cut back, but there's a a two-foot difference in the overall width as it is currently. And if we have some visuals, we should look at that because it's gonna affect. Planting and, you know, long-term maintenance. And then uh the other one was the grouting of the sewer manhole along River Road. Um there was also some information on the gazebo. Um that he was going to have at the top of the bike path as it comes down off Windsor Drive. And then the planting of the buffer area between the bend in. Windsor Drive and where the gazebo was going to be placed, the placement of that, and then the, I think there's a sign. Um bike path sign he was gonna have there um with a visual display. So I believe those were the main items that he had. Uh there's a couple other. Um. I guess financial things that were um bullet points in there. And then, since then, there has been a CAC meeting where. Um they did, they did meet and it uh talked about the, basically the entrance to Windsor Drive. For the multi-use path. So I think those were the major bullet points.
Yeah, maybe we can uh take those. Um so as far, I guess we should talk about the bike path, so it was mistakenly done at ten foot and they cut it back to about eight, right? Um but it only left about a um. About, it was a two-foot gap between the bike path and the road, something like that, around two foot?
Even with it cut, Clark went out there today to take pictures for everyone. Thank you, Clark.
Yep.
Um, it's, you know, it's, it was originally about a foot and a half to two feet. Now it's about two and a half to four feet, but that's what it looks like.
Right.
You're talking about the asphalt area?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's sort of darker, it's like this darker.
Between, yeah, it's, it's, there's just some crusher running in and out. My understanding, I did walk the site about a week and a half ago with Joel, is that that's gonna be, uh, you know. I don't know if it has to be cleared out first, I'm assuming it has to be cleared out first, but it's gonna be topsoil and grass between the road and the bike path is what his plan was.
I feel like we better reinforce that, but it should be that way.
Was that the original plan or?
I think, no.
The original plan was six feet of grass.
Six feet of grass and 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 I. From a, a long-term maintenance, I don't think it will, a four-foot. I don't think is gonna survive a season with the amount of plowing and salts that are there. I I know that the town does maintain the bike path. When they can, they clear it out, you know, year-round when it's, when it's practical. It's, it's just a, the wider that strip is, I think it's going to be better for maintenance. It's more aesthetically appealing. There's a lot of asphalt there right now. And we haven't even seen the houses or any other plantings going. You know, just an oversight on, on the installation.
Yep.
The neighbors are using the path.
Oh, yeah.
People love it.
Yeah, and and so the, but the ben- and the and the benefit is, is that there's this, you know, great link that goes through the center of town. Having a wider bike path is definitely a, a, a benefit. You know, it connects you to the park, get and gets you back up to Windsor Drive to the town center. So I guess the discussion point is, is four feet gonna be enough, you know, to have something that just doesn't turn into. An unmaintained gravel pit that connects the road to the bike path.
Is that, can you confirm what we're looking at? Is that four or six?
It's about four feet, correct?
We're talking about, just to be clear, we're talking about the spot between the bike path and the road.
Yeah.
Okay, the dark spot right there.
Which is a little over two, right?
Which I think the proposal from my last discussion with Joel is that that would be top-soiled and be seeded, it's gonna be grass.
I wonder if you have to, Clark, do you think it's about four feet when you are out there?
You know, I I'm not, I don't.
You know, I'm, I don't think it's four feet. We, we can measure it tomorrow.
I think it varies.
Yeah.
So, 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 so maybe just the baseline, what was it originally supposed, the whole thing, including grass areas?
The whole way, six.
So where would the, where would the six-foot grass area fit now?
Yeah, so I have asked him for as-built, because I don't have the picture with me tonight, but there's a hydrant that's almost right on the edge of pavement. So I actually, I'm not sure, without moving utilities, that they can move it the whole six feet. So he's doing, he's doing a lateral as-built to kind of, because then I was like, well, maybe the, the pavement was paved too wide, like the road pavement was paved too wide or something, like where is the error there?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So, so I think it's a valid question, right?
Okay, wait, I'm getting him to call in, hold on.
Okay.
So, so right now, first, perspective and scale, where, where the vehicle is, the dark area between the bike path on the left and the road on the right is probably close to four-foot width, depending on where the saw cut is. There's a lot of residual gravel that's left over in this, in this photograph. So if the bike path was cut back to six feet, it would be on the left-hand side of that darker shaded area.
Six feet will come from.
Correct. There was a previous photo, or if you'd been by the site, in probably the last month or so, it was a very narrow, you know, it was just all the catch-all, grate-all of all the asphalt and everything. There was no green space there. It's still a construction site, but it was very tight. I think that's what triggered, somebody.
Our building inspector noticed, and then Clark went out. Yeah, here he is.
Hello, Joel, can you hear us?
Hello. Hi Kevin, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good, good. We got Joel and Joel Jr. tonight.
Yeah, great. Joel, we're just talking about what happened to the bike path slash road, the space between the two, and, and some concerns which were just brought up about, even if you, you know, seed it, you know, soil it and seed it, whether it would, you know, actually survive based on plowing and salting, and, you know, what will end up there, what it would end up looking like. So.
Well, Kev, like, when we walked up Windsor, the Windsor is four feet wide, and the path, we cut it back to eight foot, six inches, but the finished blacktop will be at eight, so it'll be six inches wider than you see there. So there's, there's three and a half to four feet in width, which is the same width as, as Windsor. And our plan was, when we landscaped each house, we're gonna take out that milled blocktop, or excuse, yeah, the milled blocktop, and replace it with a good topsoil. And, you know, I mean, those lawns on Windsor are surviving fine.
Yeah, I'm not sure with the Windsor, have to take a look at it. Maybe the, is the elevation a little bit higher at the bike path from, relative to Windsor versus here?
Uh, no, it'd probably be pretty much the same. I mean, you know, both streets have a wing, you know, and then the, the bike path, and, you know, the grass is essentially even with the path and the wing. So, I think Niskiuna plows it with a small plow, and I never see any tire tracks, you know, in the spring, you know, where they run off of the blacktop. I mean, it's eight foot wide, you know, so.
I think it's more concerned, more concerned about the road being plowed and tearing up that, you know, the, the grass between the bike path and the road itself, you know?
Oh, no, the grass, the grass would be lower than the, the wing, so the plow wouldn't catch the grass, you know?
This doesn't, Joel, this doesn't act as a drainage pathway, does it?
No.
It doesn't? Okay. Is all the water directed, I gotta go back and look at one of your, your site plans, but does?
The water, the water is directed by the wings in the street, so, you know, the water is all directed to those two retention basins.
So, the, the question, Joel, before you called in, was just, you know, what are the options? Obviously, you know, your proposal is to leave it as is, to soil it and seed it. You know, the other options would be to, you know, cut back the path another couple feet or whatever, to give it more green space between the road and the path. I think those.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut it back more, I mean, that.
Again, Joel, we're just talking, these are just, you know, with the board, you know?
So, I mean, the eight, the eight foot seems to work out pretty decent, you know? There's a lot of people using the path, and if you got people going and biking both directions, especially somebody with a bike, you know, I think eight foot's a pretty decent width, you know?
I would add to that, there's a lot of wheelchair traffic. I'm seeing it daily. And you need a little extra space. So I'm kinda happy for the current width.
I mean, I like the width, it's just, the question, I think, is just, you know, what, whether the grass will survive to Dave's point, you know, and, and how, how will the finished product be? And, I mean, it's.
Well, in terms of the grass, I mean, the town is holding a pretty hefty escrow for grass, you know? You know, for a lot, I mean, I think it's like $2,000 for a lot. So, I'm sure I'm gonna grow a good grass, it's gotta be cut twice, you know, before the town releases that escrow.
Yeah. And that'll be the town's responsibility to, to mow between the bike, bike paths and the, and road and?
No, the, the people, the people mow that each house.
It'd be each house?
Yeah, yep. I mean, you treat it just like, you treat it like a normal right-of-way. I mean, every, every house in Niskiuna, the first 15 feet, the people don't own, the town owns.
Understand, just wanted to make, make it clear, Joel. Is the, the, is there an association or anything gonna be in this development at all, Joel, as far as?
No. No, there's no HOA.
That was one of the questions I think the CAC or somebody had also.
Yeah, Windsor, Windsor looks like it could be four. I mean, there's a picture of a car parked next to it.
Yeah, I just.
The car's probably under six feet, so that looks like it's four.
I was just measuring it on the aerial, just loosely, it looks like it's.
Kev, whoever's talking, I can't hear them.
Yeah, that's Mr. Khan.
Okay, no, yeah, no, we're just saying that Windsor, we're just looking at an aerial view. Windsor, the grass area looks like it could be around four, like you said, Joel.
Alright. So the recommendation, or the proposal from the applicant is leave it as is, and it's just up to this board, whether we're comfortable with that.
Yeah. Joel, it's David. I'd like to make a site visit sometime, and maybe this week. Is your, is there someone I can talk to at HMA?
Hey Kevin, I can't hear.
Can't hear us, Joel? Can you hear me?
No, I can't hear you.
Everything looks okay on this end, Joel. Did he call in on the phone? Is that the phone?
Yeah, Joel, I, maybe try, try recalling, try the number.
Oh, I got it, I got it. I got you now, sorry. Go ahead.
Got us? Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
It's David. So I wanted to see if I could stop by this week?
Yep.
And?
I'm, I'm down in Virginia this week, so you can call me when you get there, Dave.
Okay, or you'll have, you have a site foreman? Is HMA on site?
No, no, they're all done.
Oh, okay, alright. Well, I'll, I'll walk Windsor, and then come down your path and take a look at, I'm, I just wanna see the pitch of the roadway. And like on Windsor, everything obviously is elevated and slopes down towards the road. I just wanna make sure this doesn't act as a secondary gutter swell.
Well, Dave, remember on, on, one of the TDE comments was to change the slope of the entrance from 3% to 4%?
Okay.
You know, that cost, that cost us like $200,000, dollars, an extra fill. And 4% is a steep slope. I mean, when you drive in there, you know, water's gonna flow. And, you know, it's gonna flow towards river for the first couple hundred feet, and then it slopes backwards towards the two retention basins, you know, once you enter Kelts Farm Road.
Okay. Okay, so the, David will take a site visit, and encourage us, the planning board members to stop by. It's okay to drive in there, Joel's my understanding, there's?
Oh, yeah, yeah. What I'd say, Dave, is, you know, walk, walk the path up to Windsor and see, see, or drive down Windsor actually, and see the grass on Windsor, you know? And, you know, that's, that Windsor is three to four feet wide.
Right.
And I'm pretty sure that path is eight feet wide, too, up there.
Yeah, previous to you calling in, we were just talking about, one of the benefits was the fact that having the wider bike path, it's been getting quite a bit of use, especially with the recent good weather. And, you know, multiple modes of transportation from walkers, wheelchairs, bikes, rollerbladers, things like that.
Oh, yeah, the, the woman on, with the wheelchair every day with her son, you know, I talk to her like every day, she loves it, you know, because she walks all the way down, crosses into Blatnik, you know? And it's pretty funny, is a lot of the people that were in the public hearings were all using the bike path, too, and I literally talk to them every day.
Okay, is there any comments from the board regarding the bike path road and the median between the two? It sounds like Dave will do a site walk and make a recommendation, and I encourage again, everybody else to take a look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other, the other thing they gotta look at when they're there, too, is, if you look at the end of Windsor, Laura and I talked about this, and we said that we're gonna plant two large maples, street trees, 12 feet from the, the wing on Windsor, spaced 18 feet apart. And then, we're gonna put a gazebo, a 10-foot gazebo, where we have the cone located, with a stone path that connects to the, to the bike path. There we go. And also note, too, is, we put three street trees on the cul-de-sac, which weren't in the plan. And for the berm, the berm called for 19 trees, and we planted 32 trees on a Z pattern. So it's a heavily, it's a heavily treed site. And you also notice that a lot of the, the lupins and the irises and the other flowers have all survived, too, in the, in the buffer zone.
I have a slightly off-the-wall question. Once, there's a homeowner.
Pull your mic. Yeah, pull it forward, please.
Once there's a homeowner, would they have the option of switching the grass out to wildflowers or something, for that little area between the road and the bike and bike path?
Nah, myself, if somebody did that, I, if I was their neighbor, I probably wouldn't like it.
Well, there's some nice slow ones that might look nice.
Mm-hmm. I think, you know, our, our, if it's a garden, then they would be allowed to do it, you know, like if it's a maintained mulched kind of garden, because you can really put those anywhere on your yard. If it's an alternative lawn mix, it should probably stay under 10 inches, because that's our code, and I don't know that we have an exception for anything else yet.
Yeah.
I must, I have an alternative lawn mix, but I keep it under 10 inches. You can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna do at the end of Windsor, we propose that, that's a, a wild, uncut, unmowed area, too, right, Laura?
Yeah, that was, yeah, he had the, well, I don't know if it was agreed to, but you have that described here.
Okay, um, I mean, I think what I like, the gazebo, the street trees are really important, I think, for keeping people from that curve and, you know, letting people know that it's a bike path. I think the, the beds of perennials are a good idea. I mean, I, we can kind of ping the unmowed grass that may not fly. What the CAC wanted to do was just reach out to a couple of the adjacent residents and get their feedback on the, like, the improvements, too, and see if, you know, we could kind of do a community thing there. They may even wanna come out and help plant, I don't know.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
I've been, I've been collecting all the seeds.
But where this proposed gazebo is, that's, that's gonna be town ownership when this is done, and the town will be maintaining that, whether they mow or don't mow, it'll be up to the town.
No, the, the town owns that now, Kev.
They own it now, yep, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that end of Windsor, that was all town land, right up to, you know, beyond the curve of this path, even.
Yep, I can see the line on the, the sketch here, yep.
Yeah.
So Joel pulled up the pavement, that was the Windsor Drive stub. Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we dug up the pavement and probably a good foot of the stone and gravel, maybe a little more, and we brought in a good foot of topsoil.
Never to be eroded.
Alright, so.
Never again.
So Dave will take a look, make a recommendation, and again, I encourage everybody also, take a look at the, the bike path as is, as built, okay?
Yeah, and the thing, the thing, I'm trying to do a post-mortem with my survey company, and they took some benchmarks last week, okay? And I, I haven't talked to them yet, Kevin, but the thing you gotta realize, though, is that the, the shutout, the, the curb boxes for the water and the fire hydrant are all set on the, on the, on the property line, so 15-foot back from, from the, the wing of the road. So, you really can't, you can't move the path anymore, because, because it's like one foot from those, those valves, you know, the valve would be right on the edge of the road, which wouldn't be a great idea, because then you'd worry about a plow hitting somebody's water service or a fire hydrant, you know?
Okay, Joel, understood. Okay, get some other items we gotta talk about? The, I guess, the gazebo would be the, so it was a proposed location for gazebo, and Joel put a cone there. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to drive down Windsor to take a look at the proposal location. I think when I walked the site with Joel, he was actually looking to go further, I guess it would be to the north of there, but I was concerned about the, the home and the end of, is it Briar Ridge there, that would be.
Right.
It would be too close, you know, be looking in their backyard. It still isn't, you know, this still, I guess, Joel, it kind of lines up with their garage, so it wasn't as far back, but.
Yeah, we said, Kev, that it would line up with the side entrance door in the garage, remember?
Yep, so that's, again, I was just a suggestion, but the cone is there for the planning board members to take a look at, to see whether, and the town, of course, see if there are any concerns with the location. The good thing, a couple of good things I think about this location, it's close to the bike path, right? It's visible. And I think it's, it's also, it's a good thing that it's visible, because if, you know, for police and for safety, you know, because they can come down to Windsor and it's, and it's kind of right there, you know? That, just my thoughts, so.
And I think it'll encourage people to, you know, to use the path, too. I mean, they probably don't need the encouragement, but, you know, it's a nice thing to have it right there. And we're gonna do a, I forgot what they call it, like a, a board inside, you know, inside the gazebo with a history of Kelts Farm. Linda Kelts is gonna help me out with that, you know? So I already reached out to Linda to get family photos and some history and stuff like that.
Now, Dave, did, Dave, did you get a chance to take a look at the cone and, and take a look at the site?
No, I did not. But the, I, I, the same sentiments was, I think the maple trees planted there are good, as long as it's not a hard buffer of screening, so that.
Yep.
Like emergency services, if they did come down there, or if a police officer came by, they could see down there to see if there were a handful of people hanging out there late at night, something like that.
Correct. Yep, beautiful.
Yeah, no, definitely, a maple's not gonna do that, you know?
Yeah.
I think it's there just to, you know, remind people that, that's not a road anymore, you know? Because we gotta, we gotta put a bollard on the, on the bike path, you know?
And then the area around the gazebo, what did you intend to do? Just let the grass grow a little bit longer there?
No, I was thinking, I don't know if I mentioned it to Laura yet, but I was thinking of, but, you know, planting, you know, around the whole gazebo, you know?
Okay. And that, that may be a good idea, only because if it was mowed or maintained, it might turn into a little pocket park, and the neighbor next door may not want that amount of activity next to it, as opposed to just a nice little resting place for someone that's, you know, biking on the path, or making a walk in the neighborhood, stopping briefly.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in terms of being intrusive, I mean, before, I mean, the people had, you know, a stubbed street where, you know, people obviously parked at the end of the road, and a lot of garbage blew down the street and collected in the woods, and, you know? And now, you know, we took all that out, it's gonna be grass and a nice area, and the bike path is definitely a lot farther away, you know?
Okay.
So it's definitely more, it's definitely more private.
One thing was mentioned, Joel, before you came online, Laura informed us that the highway department did not support the black chain link fence. You're aware of that?
Yeah, yeah, I've got good news on that. I actually, I actually procured 800 feet of three-rail locust split rail fence. So, I'm gonna have that delivered next week. So we found, we finally found a split rail fence.
Okay, great.
It's kind of hard to get.
So what other open items does this board need to review in order to go forward with the final, final approval?
I think the final approval is good. Just the one thing that Clark and I noticed in our site visit today, well, is that there's a real estate sign out there. We might wanna get the measurements and make sure that it conforms to code, and see if it wants to be a subdivision sign in the future. Share that.
Yeah, so Laura just mentioned the sign. Is that a sign, a temporary sign, or is that gonna be?
Yeah, no, it's a temporary real estate, then, I thought I mentioned this, but I said that, you know, in the future, I mean, I could take the real estate sign down and, you know, replace it with a. you know, replace it with a Kelts Farm sign, but I wasn't real hot on that. I was, it's more or less, you know, I could take it down, you know, when everything's sold. Those are, those are beams from the original barn.
Nice.
They're hand, they're ax-cut beam.
Yeah, so I guess Laura's question is, is there going to be a sign proposed, Kelts Farm, or any type of entranceway sign? Or is this just a temporary sign for sale?
No, it's just, that's just a temporary real estate sign.
All right, and so Laura, that's up to the building department, what has to occur there.
It might be too big then. We'll take a look at, it may be advantageous.
For a temporary sign, it's too big?
Um, you know, we'll take a look. It may be advantageous to treat it as a subdivision sign or a real estate sign. We'll, we'll just evaluate it.
I'm pretty sure it's four by six, Laura.
Oh, four by six? Okay, that's helpful.
All right. You know, those are the open items for the board, really, right?
What's the status of the two properties going further west on River Road? The kind of detached ones there?
Two single-family homes.
Yeah, I, I drive by there at a rate that does not allow me to fully assess that. I guess I got to go.
They're just two lots. I mean, those are probably going to be hard to sell. We'll probably sell those last, but I did, I did mention to Laura that there was some interest from, you know, some vendors of combining those two lots and putting in a a daycare facility, you know, because it doesn't have any neighbors, you know, and it's convenient to Knowles and G E R and D, and I know from trying to get my grandchildren in daycare in Niskuna, they had to wait a year, you know, to get kids in at the JCC, so there's definitely a shortage, but our our town code, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, just, it only allows daycare facilities like in churches or schools.
Um, I think, I'll double check. I think with a special use permit, you can have daycare in our.
Yeah, this is our, this is our one.
This is our, this is our.
It's our one.
Yeah, it's our one, yeah. Um, I think if it's designated as a school.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's,
Yeah.
There's no firm plans or no even proposed plans yet, but I mean, I mean, the plan right now is that if somebody would want to buy a house there, we'll build them a house, but you know, River Road is a busy street and that's kind of hard sell, so I anticipate those lots selling like last, you know?
And so I can recall, but did you already clear it or no?
Uh, they're cleared to the clearing limits on the approved plan.
Okay.
I mean, they both have short driveway entrances, the water and sewer installed, and we cleared to the agreed-upon clearing limits. No, in fact, we didn't clear to the agreed-upon limits. There's a lot of trees left on the site still.
Okay. It can be a nursery school. Yeah. Which I, yeah. And was this in a child daycare center? Yeah, I think they're allowed.
It's allowed with the
With a special use permit, yeah.
Special permitted use.
I mean, we may, we may in the future entertain that, you know, if it's possible. Because like I said, it's going to be hard to sell a house on River Road.
You might be surprised on that.
Either way, it's your choice, Joel. You know, obviously, we'll evaluate any application that you make.
Sure.
Design a nice house, Joel, it'll sell.
There you go. We finished up, Dave, Laura, did I send you the townhouse final plans?
Uh, for the architecture review board?
Yeah.
Uh, did we get those, Clark? No, we don't have those yet.
Okay, I'll, I'll send them tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
So right, right now, we got my daughter's house going up, which you've all seen, then we're going to have one of the duplex townhouses on 1416 Kelts Farm Road, and then one Kelts Farm Road is going to be 1,800 square foot ranch. So I'll send you all those plans, right? And Laura, I think the only open thing in my mind, I talked to Elena, is is the law aspects. Do you know where we stand there?
Um, we have a draft of the Forever Wild language, but I think we still need the legal descriptions from your engineer. Right, Elena?
Oh, Elena's right there, yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. I know that we reached out to Paul Briggs to find out, and he did indicate that it is in a file that's not specific to this project, so I have to go through that and try to track down what exactly is there and what we still need. So I'll reach out to you this week.
We probably gave you Overlook Park, but we didn't give you Kelts yet then, so you need a, you need a legal description for the eight acres that we're giving to the town then?
Yeah, and the detention ponds and the right-of-way.
Okay. All right, we'll jump right on that.
Because I think we have the language, we were working on the language for the Forever Wild, but we need the legal descriptions.
Okay.
And I'm, bad news, I think that sign is too big under any code.
Oh, come on. Too big? I mean, that's the same size that I used in Clinton Park for the last three years.
Really?
Geez.
Subdivision is 16 square feet, real estate is 16 square feet, temporary signs are 32 square feet, but they're only allowed to be up for a month.
For how many months?
Two total a year. Two months total.
Wow.
Well, you can work out with the planning department what your options are there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Hey Joel, I see that you shrink it to code and you just make the font really big. Make that 550 stand out.
Oh, man. So what am I allowed for 12 months of the year, you know, for a temporary sign?
For the real estate, you can have 16. If you want to keep it at 24, it's an appeal.
All right, I got to appeal it because, I mean, I already paid for the sign and installed it and everything, so how do I appeal?
Uh, you can call me in the morning.
Okay.
Okay. Patrick, did you have something?
No.
So as far as open items go, it sounds like we're going to do a site visit, take a look at the location of the gazebo. Dave's going to take a look at the space between the bike path and the road, and I encourage planning board members, I already had several, stated several times, right? Compare it to Windsor Drive. And I think we're getting close to resolution then. We're going to have a resolution for the, our next meeting would be July 11th. If the planning department can pull that all together and got everything that they need from Joel. I don't know if you need all the legal descriptions for the final approval, do you, Laura?
We need the legal descriptions for acceptance at the town board level, not, we're okay with final subdivision if you guys are okay.
Yep. Okay.
When is the, what's the step for the town board resolution, Laura?
The legal description.
No, 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 I mean, say like, say on July 11th, the planning board votes, but when does the town board vote?
And it's scheduled tentatively for the end of June.
Oh, end of June?
Right.
Oh, okay.
If you get, if we have everything and we're happy.
That's the acceptance of the roads.
Yeah.
And the infrastructure.
All right, I'll, I'll call advanced engineering tomorrow and get you that legal description then, right?
Hey Joel, how many lots are sold so far?
Uh, we, we're not selling yet.
Okay.
We have a list, but, you know, we're not, we're not selling anything yet.
Okay.
Just based on final approvals, then?
Yeah, I mean, the problem these days with supply chain is, you know, builders are quoting like a minimum of 12 months to build a house, you know what I mean? So I don't want to jump the gun and, you know, and start building in August or September or something, you know?
Right.
So the duplex townhome and the ranch are going to be specs, you know, and, and I'll probably, I'll probably put more townhouse specs in, you know? And then, once I, once I see prices level out, then we'll be confident with the pricing, and then we could take some contracts.
David, you have any other questions or comments?
No, nothing further.
Okay. Anything else from you, Joel?
No, no, no. I'll just, I'll get the legal description. I'll call Laura tomorrow for the appeal on the sign size. And I think that's it for me then, right?
Right, and then we'll take a look, and we'll have you on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
For approval.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, Joel.
Thanks.
All right, bye.
Okay. We're getting there. All right, next on the agenda is 1850 Union Street, the Emmanuel Evangel, yeah, Lutheran Church, site plan application for operations of a daycare center, and I'm, I believe we have the applicant online, and thank you for your patience tonight.
Problem.
Yeah, appreciate it. As you see, we had a long agenda tonight, and that's, is Brownell, is that?
Brownell.
Brownell, okay. Uh, so I guess we could, you could kick it off for us and tell us about the project. And, and I think there's some history here, right? Is this the previous proposal for the church on Hillside?
Yes, we're still working with the church on Hillside. It's just a, it's an extended timeline, so we're, you know, excited to be able to work with Emmanuel Lutheran. They had a prior school age program running in the building, so they're, that's been gone since 2020. It was very abrupt, so they're really excited as well to be coming along with us, but, like I said, same, pretty much the same idea as we were talking about the church on Hillside. It's for school age children during the school year, so September to June, we would be there in the afternoons from bus drop-off, which is around 2:15, 2:30-ish until 6 o'clock. We'll run full-day camps for families on any vacation days or school holidays. And then in the summer, we would do 10 weeks of summer camp from, full days from 7:30 to 5:30.
So there's a potential that you would operate this location and the other location once you come through any of the issues that you have there?
Yeah, absolutely. That's our hope to be able to operate. This is our main location, and then by the time Hillside is ready to come along, that that could be an overflow, which would be wonderful news for us. And also for the area, there's just not a lot of school age childcare available.
Yeah, that was just mentioned by the previous applicant, so as you know. So with this, Laura, I mean, what is this application require, what kind of reviews? Is it just police and fire? I mean?
No, it's a special use permit.
It's a special use permit.
Um, we were hoping, because we, I mean, it wasn't that long ago that they got a special use permit for, it was the, so if you guys remember, it was the daycare that was in the old town hall, moved here very quickly because they were having issues with the town hall landlord. So we approved the special use permit for 1850 Union Street for daycare. Unfortunately, special use permits expire in a year if the use isn't continued. And so I was, I was hoping that it had been less than a year since the childcare had been there, but if Ms. Brownell's date is right, it's been two years. So they need to go through the full special use permit process, but I did ask Ms. Vinnan if we can tentatively call for a public hearing at the town board too, so you guys can hold them, because the town board is a month out when they call for a public hearing. So you guys can hold yours, and then they can hold theirs. It's still actually quite a staggered public hearing, but at least it starts the whole process.
Now, we get it going. I hear any comments? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, assuming that we get through the public hearing, got any surprises, and the town board takes action, I mean, it's pretty straightforward except for police-fire review, right?
I mean, we essentially reviewed it like
Licensing in the building.
Three years ago.
In the building, yeah, so I don't want to say it's easy, but just, you know, because obviously there's some hurdles to come through, but.
It's just unfortunate that that timeframe was.
Did it ever operate as a daycare with a special use?
Yeah, they were operating happily there.
And what happened to them?
I, I mean, I'm guessing COVID. I don't know. They didn't notify us that they closed.
It was a different applicant at that time?
Yeah, it was Christina White. It was the Niskuna co-op.
Yeah.
Having some serious staffing issues. That's what Emmanuel told us.
Okay.
Laura, when it was operating, did we ever get any, did the town ever get any calls or issues from neighbors or anything like that when it, when it was previously operating as a daycare?
Yeah, no complaints, no complaints whatsoever. And they seemed, at the time, they seemed to be happy. In 2020, I think that daycares everywhere were struggling for staff. It was a really, really tough time for daycares.
Yeah. And as from the previous, and may not know the answer to this, but from the previous owner to this application, is there any interior or changes in the way the site functions that we're aware of? Do you know?
Um, there were no changes to the interior. There was a new heating system installed. I'm not sure if that counts, but that's the only thing that's changed.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm trying to get at, so basically, it's a reproduction of what occurred there before. There's no change in the playground or traffic patterns or anything like that, so there is no complaints before. We would expect maybe low amount of input from the public, I guess. Yep.
Has it been vacant for the two years in the interim? Was there anything else in between or no?
I don't know personally.
Um, the church uses it, so it's still being used for Sunday school. There is another congregation that meets in the basement space currently. They're actually going to move upstairs to the main worship area, so it's been in constant use, just not as a daycare space.
All right, so can we call for a public hearing on the July 11th meeting? You have time to do that?
Yeah, definitely.
You get legal notice out and everything? Okay. That sounds reasonable, and then we'll have a public hearing on the 11th, and if you could, you know, be present at that meeting, just give an overview for the public of of your proposal here, that would help out, and then we'll listen to what they have to say. Do we, do we also do a tentative resolution to same meeting? And that way, if we don't hear any surprises, we can keep it moving forward at least as fast as the planning board can. And that would help out, keep town board, right?
Yeah.
And it would help you out.
It still has to come back to you after that, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it has to come back. You got it. Does that sound good to everybody?
Ms. Brownell, oh, I'm sorry, I was going to say, Ms. Brownell, are you looking to to be open and accepting new students for the fall?
Yes, we are. We're looking to enroll after school for the fall. We have a really large list, about 30 children interested in being in that program.
Great.
Well, there's no daycare.
Yeah, well, we'll do what we can to.
Yeah, I mean, this is after-school care.
It's, it's
Yeah.
Well, I think the
It has a summer program.
No, there's a summer program, yeah, there's, I'm trying to look it up here, and so it's all in the application here.
Yeah, because the
It's year-round, but for school age children, so it would be four to 12 in the summertime. In the summertime, we offer a program for teens as well. Some summer go up to 15, but it is school age. I usually just say daycare because there's not a great distinction in the public mind.
Yeah, but the licensing for under two is super hard, and that's actually like critical for Niskuna.
That's right, yeah.
None. And then two to four is difficult, but even after school.
No, I mean, it's important, but it's just, yeah.
Great. Okay, any questions from the board? Regarding this application, or any other comments from the applicant?
Uh, no, I think we're all set. Thank you so much. We're excited to move forward.
Yeah, we'll move forward, and we'll have the public hearing on the 11th of July.
Right, we will be there in person.
Ms. Brownell, what slowed you up at the Hillside Church?
We had some concerns with some issues inside the building that we really wanted to be fixed before we were filling it with children, basically. Uh, so we're just picking a plan together to get those things addressed.
Laura, is that something the building department?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of it was that that it doesn't necessarily meet code, and there's code upgrades that have to happen, and those things take time.
Okay, so you're on top of that. I mean, the building department's on top of it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they had a building permit for the for the site plan that you guys approved, but it hasn't closed because they have to complete certain items that are required. It's not planning board items, it's building code.
No, no, I understand, yeah, I want to make sure that the time, the building department is. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. Planning department updates? Anything special you'd like to talk about tonight, Clark or Laura?
So Clark reached out to GE, and Clark, you can jump in here. They do have site plans, which I meant to email you prior to the meeting. What I'd like to do is email them to you after the meeting, and if you guys are comfortable, call for a tentative resolution for July 11th. It's just, it's a long time to go a month without a meeting, and I know they were on a tight schedule, so I don't think anything's changed. Clark, did you get a chance to look at those plans? I'll send them to the board.
No, we got, we got them very late, so I haven't really looked at them that much myself.
Okay, no, I think we were, we were trying to help them along, and we've been kind of holding on them, come through whatever design issues they may have had. Uh, and it sounds like they're going to hold the height of the building and go with the existing variance that was granted, so there's no reason not to have the resolution. Any concerns with that from the board? Okay. Anything else, Laura, as far as updates?
Um, not unless you guys had
No, it sounds like there's some other emails, maybe from Rivers Ledge, that some other information that might have gotten today, or
At Rivers Ledge?
Yeah, was there something else? Well, there's, was there any other emails? Just get us caught up, anything that you have. Or maybe it was Mr. Nikki.
It was Mr. Nikki. Yeah, so he sent those. I actually hadn't looked at the plan that I pulled up on my screen.
Yeah, so we haven't had the opportunity to take those, whatever you got, you can share with the board, appreciate that. And, all right, all right, nothing else on updates? Any questions for Laura regarding any projects off from anybody? No? All right, then we'll just go right to commission business. Mr. Diopino, you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
How about Mr. McPartlin? He's going down my list here.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, and Mr. Khan?
Nothing, sir.
And Mr. Laflamme?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Shenfield?
Nope, nothing for me.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Gold?
Nothing.
And Ms. Strang?
Yes, sir.
And I have nothing tonight. Uh, just again, thank you for everybody. Thank you for the planning department. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Move for adjournment by Ms. Gold. Do I have second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. All those in favor of adjournment, adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We are adjourned at, uh, it's like nine, something, or nine sixteen, nine nineteen?
Nine nineteen.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.